All right. Ooh, that's kind of loud. Good afternoon, everybody. For some reason, this seems a little louder than usual. I'll try to not overdo. Anyway, welcome to our CPHD Proposed Fiscal Year 2021 Planning Division Work Plan Work Session. So I use work a couple of times, which when we get into this, it's pretty clear work, I think, is the theme. There is a lot of work going on. I want to thank everybody for being here, folks out here, and our two commissioners at the table, Chair of the Planning Commissioner, Commissioner Elizabeth Guerra, and Jim Lantelme, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, and they're going to join in. They've got a specific spot in the agenda to, you know, talk to us a little bit, but I expect we'll have a little bit of a conversation anyway and go back and forth. And do you have some other planning commissioners in the room? I think I didn't see any.
No.
You have a big meeting tonight. That's fine. They don't need to be here. And it's wonderful to have our staff. I will note that our colleague Eric Gutchal, he is under the weather, so he will not be joining today. So it's just the four of us, but I think we will hold down the fort. And I think I will just say that this is, when you look at, when I looked over the presentation and the work we're going, I mean, this is very full. There is a lot here that we're doing. We've got long-range planning, we've got development issues, we've got zoning issues, housing, housing pops up a number of times, as it should. Staff's going to be presenting their accomplishments to us and their proposed plan and priorities moving forward. And of course, what they're hoping to get from us is some feedback from board members and actually, planning commissioner too, would like some of your input on what we think about these proposed, the proposed plan and the priorities. Are there any kind of major changes we want to make? We're not going to be taking any decisions today. And in fact, when I looked over, there's so much information, I think we're going to get more that we need to kind of digest and think about. But we do want to kind of get a sense of where we are and if there's any sort of major discomfort with some area, it would be good to surface it today so we can make sure that we're all on the same track. So with that, I think I will turn it over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to be here. Every year, we have a planning work plan session with the board where we lay out priorities. There's one particular slide in today's presentation, which I think is particularly telling. It's all those things that we never discussed last year that we ended up doing anyway. And there's a lot of those. And so as much as planners like to plan, sometimes things just happen. We have a lot of efforts gone into this plan and collaborating with sister agencies, Parks and DES and AED. And as with all things, requires a balance. And so I'm going to turn it over to the man who balances many plates on the end of one of those sticks and spins them all, Bob Duffy, who is going to be assisted by other planning staff.
Thank you, County Manager, and good afternoon to the County Board and certainly the Chair and Vice Chair of our Planning Commission. I'm looking forward to this presentation this afternoon of our preliminary FY21 work program. The slide that you have before you is page three of the presentation. I want to just give a brief overview of what I'll cover this afternoon. And again, this is a lot of material to digest. It always is, as we try to balance the needs of our staff, the needs of the community, as well as the priorities that you certainly set. And so I'm going to give a high-level presentation, an overview, pretty complete, but an overview of what our work program, preliminary work program covers. I'm going to talk about our organization's staffing. I want to highlight some major accomplishments. As the manager said, I think we've accomplished or in the process of accomplishing what we set out in last year's work program with you, as well as a number of other important elements that staff was able to produce. I want to talk about our commitment to innovation in terms of planning policy and practice, organization, staff, process, and engagements. It's important, as we begin this new fiscal year, as also the next decade, and think about what some of the priorities will be that will influence our work program moving forward. Then I'll talk about, again, the factors that have come into play as we put this together and a high-level overview of our preliminary FY21 work program. And then I'll summarize some of the projects that, working with staff, that unfortunately we'll only have limited resources to address in the next fiscal year and some that we're recommending that you consider putting off until FY22 and future work programs. There are a number of tables that are attached to this presentation, and I'll talk about those in a minute, that provide a great level of detail in terms of each of the projects or programs that we're pursuing. And then there are some attachments that describe each of the projects in more detail. So first, as I lead into the work program, I want to thank the great work that Jen Smith, Aaron Schreiber, Chris Kreider, and Joanne Harrison and the entire planning staff have done to help us put together this presentation and work program for you today. Without them, this certainly would be impossible. And so they've done an outstanding job in preparing this for the presentation today. Again, an organizational chart, you've seen this a number of times. As you know, we have two major sections, current planning, which is led by Aaron Schreiber, comprehensive planning led by Jennifer Smith, and the urban design section, which is important to not only the functions of the planning division, but the entire department and many other departments, given the role that Chris and his staff do. Last year, we relocated or reassigned the research team from the urban design staff to the director's office for a number of reasons, given the 2020 census work and a number of projects that the research team is involved with in terms of county-wide operations. So looking a little further into our current staffing and organization, 31 staff today. I want to note that during the course of last year, Human Resources did a comprehensive study of all of our planning titles and made some important recommendations, some that we've been wanting to pursue for some time. And that is the creation of a new supervisory level section. Now, these are existing positions that appear in bold, they're not new positions, they involve reclassifications. For example, Jen Smith was reclassed from planning supervisor to planning manager, Aaron Schreiber from planning supervisor to planning manager, and we have three new position titles that affected principal planners that enable them to play a larger role in more of a supervisory and management role within their sections, which is important for the development of our staff. We haven't had this position between a planning supervisor and a principal planner. So it's a way to enable development of our staff in some important ways. We've discussed this work program and the staffing needs with the county manager, and as you can see on the right, we're recommending one and a half positions. The half position would increase one of our associate planners, who's playing a key role with Housing Arlington. And we're asking for a new principal planner to assist in the comprehensive planning work program. So we've based the work program you'll see today on our staffing, resources, and needs. Just to highlight some of the accomplishments over this past year, again, we projected 10 site plan applications be approved, there were actually nine, involving 5.6 million square feet, over 3,000 residential units. And when you look at the community benefits, particularly the implementation of our affordable housing master plan, commitment of over $34 million. Now, that includes the Amazon Met Park commitment, but $34 million, a significant milestone for the county with 277 calves. Again, plays a large role in helping meet our goals of our affordable housing master plan on an annual basis. You can see some of the other commitments in terms of site plan amendments, use permits, our staffing to the Planning Commission, its committees continues to be a significant part of our work program. There were 14 Planning Commission meetings during the past year, 52 subcommittee or committee meetings of the Planning Commission involving ZOCO, LRPC, and SPRC. A considerable commitment of time by our citizen planners, and it certainly should be noted. Housing Arlington, again, as you can see, in mid-year, we pivoted to play a key role, working with the Housing Division on missing middle, pre-planning, and scoping, as well as a number of zoning ordinance amendments dealing with institutional parking regulation changes, elder care phase one. And again, following the significant flooding issue the county experienced, our staff played a key role with the emergency recovery office that was set up. And certainly, we're now working with DES staff on the flood recovery committee work that's underway. As you know, we're going to be very actively involved with the Department of Public Parks and Recreation with the Biophilic Cities Network. That application is complete, and I believe it's been submitted. Aaron Schreiber and his staff are working with DES on Vision Zero. And again, the Arlington Restaurant Initiative continues to be a major effort, particularly the Clarendon and other parts of our commercial districts. So there's a more full table of our accomplishments, Table Four, that's attached to the work program. It's important that, again, as I said earlier, that we commit to innovation in terms of planning policy and practice, our organization, staffing, and process engagement. And I've highlighted some of the areas that are going to be key for us and have been key for our operations, whether it's housing and community equity, resiliency, biophilia, urban natural areas, planning for public facilities, and most importantly, working with my partner, the zoning administrator, who's with us today, to think about how we can work together to form a more 21st century zoning ordinance in terms of practice, maintenance, and amendments. In terms of the organization, Housing Arlington has given us a new opportunity to reorient, restructure staff to tackle that major priority for our community in terms of cross-functional assignments inside the department, inside the division, and that's going to continue to be important as our work program continues. We continue to support, work on a number of fronts, on staffing. I won't go into all of these, but again, it's important that we continue to mentor, provide opportunities for cross-sectional, divisional development, professional development with our staff to remain competitive. Process in terms of permit Arlington, we played a major role in working with the interdepartmental team and dealing with customer experience. Again, we continue to work with our planning commissioners on the SPRC scheduling and reporting. And one thing that we've started to work on, and Chris Kreider, working with the zoning administrator and myself, we tackle about 130 to 150 administrative reviews and approvals every year, some of them involving things like moving a door, additional vents, small changes either to a facade or to landscaping that we can simplify. And so we're going to be reporting back to the county manager later this year on how we can do that. We don't think some of this requires zoning ordinance amendments, but could be done administratively. Lastly, engagement continues to be paramount, and I'm going to focus on two recent initiatives that we've put into practice. But lastly, I want to note that our ongoing collaboration with the Planning Commission will continue to be vitally important, given the work program this coming year, and providing planning commissioners, particularly many of our new commissioners you've appointed, with ongoing and continuous learning opportunities and resources. We've done a number of things in that area. But in terms of examples of technology, two new tools that we've been able to put together that are pretty important. And we're using a new technology, Canevio, thanks to Bryna, who's helped us with our communication staff on this, and Jessica Margarite from the department's communication team. We now have introduced what we're calling a virtual walking tour. All of the site plan review processes begin usually with some form of walking tour. Now, we won't do that. We have a new tool that enables commissioners and the community to experience the site, to online, provide questions, get feedback, and as you can see, for staff to continually load new information into this, so we have a virtual approach to understanding the site and the project. In terms of comprehensive or long-range planning, the board, recall recently, we had a major community work session with, on Lee Highway. And our project manager is using a new tool that enables the community to have a continuous dialogue with staff on issues that were subject of that work session. As many of the board members know, you've seen the big boards that we'll have at the work session, asking citizens, property owners, businesses to provide us with their comments and ideas. Now, we've translated that into an online communication tool that allows readers to add their comments and thoughts on an ongoing basis. We've gotten a great response to this new tool, and you can see one of the comments above. So all of those yellow circles represent comments that we receive, we're recording these, and it continues the outreach effort well beyond the work session itself. So two great examples. This next slide, I think, is extremely important, not only in terms of the factors that influence our upcoming work program, but also the lens of equity, biophilia, sustainability, resilience, that we're going to have to continue to look at as a planning team, as a county, as we address some of these factors. The work program that I'll present this afternoon is within the scope of our current staff, resources, and capacity. Again, it addresses plan growth, and I want to stress, plan growth, that we're part of the work program. Certainly Housing Arlington and a number of other factors that we've considered in putting this work program together. But I can't stress enough that as we move forward with projects like the Lee Highway Plan, the work in Pentagon City, and work well beyond that over the next decade, we're going to have to ensure that we're working and focusing on a lens that addresses community equity, resiliency, in terms of energy, climate, biophilia, urban natural areas, and our ongoing approach to sustainability of land use and density. Those are extremely important, while they've been part of our work program and our planning efforts in the past, their greater urgency in terms of our ensuring that our plans address those important and interrelated issues. So what I'd like to do is just give you some highlights of the Planning Division Work Program for FY21, and I've organized them around three areas. Core functions, these are the functions, programs, projects that we're required either by county regulation, the zoning ordinance, or by state legislation, such as some of our comprehensive planning work and our work with the Planning Commission itself. A number of housing, planning, housing, and zoning initiatives, some, many of which we've already started and will continue into this coming year. And third, most important, and the manager referenced this, is that we will be providing significant planning to support to a number of initiatives that are being led, will be led by other county departments. So this interdepartmental, interdivisional level of collaboration coordination is pretty important. So back to the core functions. We believe that there'll be approximately 15 major site plan applications that could come to the Planning Commission and County Board. Remember, last year, we projected 10, we got pretty close. So the plan growth continues to move forward. In Table Two, that's attached to the presentation, we've highlighted those projects, and we can talk more about those in a minute. We'll see at least two phased development site plans. The first that the board and planning commissioner will see will be related to Sherrlington and the work staff is doing there, as well as the WEDA application. We will likely process 200 use permit and site plan amendment applications, both in terms of renewals and new application over the coming year. As indicated earlier, our support to the Planning Commission and its committees, the SPRC, LRPC, and ZOCO, working, Aaron Schreiber and his staff, working with planning commissioners, picking on the SPRC side, have done some important things to help with the scheduling and organization of agendas with SPRC to be sure that we'll be able to tackle the volume of work that you see above. And we're pretty confident that we can get there, but again, it's going to require close collaboration with our commissioners. We'll continue to support the Public Facility Review Committee, which the County Board approves. We're going to see the Career Center is an important aspect of our work program next year. Again, some of the planning initiatives that are underway and will complete or make great progress in over the coming year. Sherrlington Special General Land Use Plan Study, you'll see that in the spring. The Highway, this is the important year for the Highway, starting with the recent community work program, where we'll be working with the Lee Highway Alliance and other interests in the community to develop some alternative plan scenarios, to test those out, what the implications are for Arlington and the corridor, and a preliminary concept plan. We are initiating the Pentagon City phased development site plan. We're looking at a March start with this. As you know, the MOA has been signed by the major property owners. On Friday, we received a number of proposals with the consultant team to do that work. Matt Matusik is in the process of working with purchasing. We have interdepartmental team that'll be reviewing those, and we'll be proceeding towards a contract very shortly. Housing Arlington, there are a number of components to this, and again, our acting housing director is here, along with Richard Tucker, and they'll be able to address more of these, more of these elements of our work program, whether it's enabling over 400 two-family dwellings in several of our zoning districts to make improvements and make sure that housing stock is retained to our Housing Conservation District recommendations, new zoning tools, and work on the missing middle. We have a full range of zoning ordinance amendments that we can discuss with you. And again, there is a separate attachment F that goes, oh, those more detail, and I'll pull those slides up when we get into the discussion portion of our work session today. And lastly, for planning support, Clarendon Sector Plan Implementation, we'll pull this up for some further discussion, more detailed discussion, but we are going to see at least three new major site plan applications in Clarendon that'll have implications for the implementation of the plan, as well as our ability to provide planned capital investments and improvements, whether it's a fire station, a new park, and possibly community childcare support facilities. Public facilities planning, the work that Matt Ladd's been doing jointly with both the County Board and APS. We have a work program that will initiate that work. And again, that involves multiple departments, as well as Arlington Public Schools. And again, several new areas that really are an outgrowth of other work. The storm water management, we are actively involved with the committee. The DES is formed to make recommendations this spring to the county manager, the Biophilic Cities Network. And as part of the update of the landscape element of the comp plan, we're also going to be working in parallel, and this will involve our landscape architecture staff, to begin the process of updating some of our landscape standards, which is long overdue. And this will help get ahead of some of the recommendations from the Public Spaces Master Plan, the biophilic principles that the board has embraced in the resolution, and some other opportunities. So following the work program, the summary, there are a series of tables. And the tables provide greater information for each of the projects and some that I haven't covered. I've tried to provide some highlights this afternoon. It defines the actual program and project, and the various sub-elements or parts of that work program or project, what are the objectives and products that we'll be producing during 2020 and 2021, in some cases beyond, the schedule for producing those facility, those various deliverables and products, who will be in the lead from planning in terms of comp planning, current planning, and urban design, how it will affect our other divisions within the department, and how other departments are involved in this work, whether they're playing a lead and supportive role. So we've done this for our entire work program. And again, there are some parts of the tables that are highlighted indicating where we believe we can only provide limited levels of support, and then in several cases where, for example, we may need further information dealing with the long-range planning work for public facility planning, or in the case of one of our pending special GLUP studies, where we may have to hold off on bringing recommendations to the board, Planning Commission, until FY22. But again, many of this is contingent upon your recommendations and the final work program as we develop. Now, it's all Now, it's always important to understand what are some of the things that, again, we have limited planning services in FY '21, and some that we believe, unfortunately, that we have to recommend you consider including in future work programs. In terms of the planning, limited planning services, we'll be scheduled to begin our five-year update of the Comprehensive Plan. This is required by the Commonwealth. While we can start that, it's going to be in a limited capacity in FY '21. There are a number of comprehensive plan updates, implementation, participation, that we play. Well, we'll be involved, but the frequency and the level of involvement we'll have to back off on slightly. The General Land Use Plan, some studies or recommendations. We're completing the Sherrlington recommendations to bring forward in the spring. We have two other applications. One that we'll be bringing forward by the end of the year, and a third, based on the final work program, may not come forward until FY '21. While we provided some staff support to AED on the four-mile-run Valley Arts District Formation, our role will be more limited in that during this next year. The zoning ordinance for the Crystal City Plan, dealing with building height amendments. As you know, we've been working with JBG on exploring the feasibility of this. We believe we may have a path forward. It's going to require some further work. And this will likely be undertaken in the third quarter of this year with bringing recommendations in the final quarter of '21. But we believe we may have some options to move forward with this. We continue to meet with the developer about this opportunity. Again, Public Facilities Planning. One area I want to note that we've added, and we're calling it Small Business Support. Again, there are a number of project areas that we undertook last year that were related to small business. During this coming year, we are going to look at the Columbia Pike, ground floor uses, determine whether we can expand opportunities for alternative uses to continue to support revitalization of the Pike. I think an important opportunity that we're also going to include in our work program is to look back at the current special exception and permitted uses that are within the zoning ordinance to date. Some of them may be outdated and may be better suited moving from special exception or use permit to permitted. We've recently began a series of quarterly meetings working with the planning and zoning staff of the City of Alexandria to discuss the work that they've been doing, and they'll be bringing forward to their city council in the spring. However, we approach this administration of special exception uses very differently from the City of Alexandria. But there are some areas that we think that we'll include under Small Business Support that we think could be helpful there. Again, current planning staff has been participating in a number of what traditionally would be comprehensive planning projects, such as Vision Zero, supporting DES. Again, we may have to limit that, given the number of site plan applications. And again, urban design support to county departments. And just to conclude, several of the projects that we think that will need direction from the Board, but we've not included in this work program, are, once again, the implementation of the four-mile-run Valley, GLUP and zoning amendments. Again, the work the AED is leading continues on the Public Arts District, which will be informing that effort. We have included a major zoning study of public districts, public zoning districts, to support public facility operations. And again, we may need to postpone that. The Child Care Initiative, Phase 2. Again, we postponed that last year. We may have to do that again this year. There have been a number of recommendations in terms of the sign ordinance, to open the ordinance up and study amendments. You've probably seen the letter from the Chamber of Commerce. Arlova and I will be soon meeting with the staff from the Chamber to discuss some of the questions, issues that they have raised, and we'll be meeting with the Government Affairs Committee. But we do not plan on opening the sign ordinance up. And we've made that clear to Chamber staff. And recently, you've heard about the need. I think we've discussed with one of our managers of several of our successful farmers' markets about having off-premise signs. And Arlova and I have discussed this, and we can provide a little more detail on this if you've got a question about it. We'll probably have to put off any major revisions to our 4.1 regulations. And there are a number of long-term zoning ordinance amendments that are outlined in Attachment F, that we can discuss in more detail, as well as form-based code amendments. Two areas that I think you're going to hear from our Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission is that we, as a county, need to begin to think about what is the future of our sector plans? Is there a need to rethink what a sector plan is? Will we need sector plans, as we've known them over the last several decades, in the future? And how would alternatives to approaching that level of detailed planning, which has been so important to Arlington? How could that apply in Ballston and Virginia Square, where we have two of our oldest sector plans? This is something that I think we've included in our work program, and unfortunately, we've had to punt it. And again, as your planning director, I think this is ultimately something that we're going to need to tackle, unfortunately, given our level of staffing and the commitments. It may be challenging, but I suspect the Planning Commissioners will have something to say about this. So just to highlight some of the limited planning services and some of the areas that unfortunately, we think we will not be able to get to in FY '21. It may have to go back to '22. So Chair Garvey, I'm going to complete that part of my presentation and open it up for County Board and Planning Commission discussion.
Thank you. And we do have our Planning Commission up yet. Before I turn it over to our Planning Commission, though, I want to welcome, I'm not sure, Arlova Vam, our zoning administrator. Thank you for being here with us. And I wanted to see if either the manager or Samir, if you wanted to make any comments. I will draw my colleagues' attention to, if you get the way back of the slide deck, Slides 46 and 47 have a little more detail on priority items. They're kind of in different sort of buckets, long-term, short-term, and condensed process. And I don't know, Mark, if you wanted to sort of address what that is a little bit? You and I had talked about that just a little bit.
Actually, Bob, if we can go to Slide 46. Or... Okay. So, we, over the last year or two, we have a constant conversation that takes place among board members and between board members and staff that talk about studies related specifically to the zoning ordinance. And we try to come up with a typology that puts them in buckets. And so, the buckets have a long-term study bucket, a short-term review, and a condensed process. Essentially, with each of those goes a certain level of public engagement. As you work your way down that list, the public engagement is less, and the process is less, with an understanding that we will be quicker in getting to some things. And so, that's the typology we've used. And so, if you have thoughts about whether we've put things in the right buckets, or whether there are things that belong and out of the bucket, I think there's that slide, and there's another slide following that, which also has some additional items.
That's the future list. Yeah.
Yeah.
The next one.
Slide 47. That is, no, those are all things that are ongoing. It's just, and, oh, it's future, right?
Yes.
Those are future. And then, we even have a bonus slide, Slide 48, which is things we just didn't want to put in a bucket because right now, we're not exactly sure what they are and where they would go.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So folks, as I said, there is a lot for us to process, and we're not going to begin to finish it here. But I think that's helpful for you to kind of explain a little bit. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Duffy. So now, we'll go to our Planning Commission. And any thoughts or recommendations or comments you'd like to make?
Thank you very much. I want to start by saying how impressed the Planning Commission remains both by staff's ability, their knowledge and competence, and their ability to interact with our very engaged public, including the Planning Commission. Because it's one thing to know all of this material, and it's another to be able to explain it to everyone. We have a lot of Planning Commissioners who are not planners. But also, the scope and breadth of what we can accomplish with all of this expertise and dedication, as well as the ambitiousness of these work programs, both last year and this year. And a lot of this, of course, is in response to demand. And we have a lot of demand, and we continue to think both short-term with the projects at hand, and long-term with how to plan for the areas and how to improve upon what we're already doing. We're impressed, as well, with the repeated innovation in addressing a lot of these issues. For example, the upcoming PDSP, and trying to consider community benefits at a higher level, considering several upcoming projects in Crystal City all at once. And with the Board and staff actions that align with our community visions. For example, some of the recent actions that allowed for flexibility with the community pool siting and the permitted revisions to the interiors of non-conforming homes. We know our adjacent jurisdictions actually zone those sort of uses out. So it's really heartening to see that these reflect what we're hearing in the community and the vision that we have, how we want to sort of celebrate our own diversity in our community development. We also feel we're starting to see some of this progressive action and planning aligned with our visions reflected in some of our recent SPRCs. So it's a little bit of a snowball effect. We're seeing developers opting to go beyond the minimum, at least for our participation in SPRC, in terms of being receptive to the community conversation and complying with the plans and policies, and really embracing the vision and what they see as the intent. And hopefully, you'll see this, too, as this comes forward with the Key Bridge Marriott, and the focus on the natural landscape, and with artists, and their focus on biophilia, and being very responsive to both the discussions that they had with Lee Highway early in the planning process, and what they heard from the community and the SPRC. We're very pleased to see additional staffing options. And we're always really heartened and gratified to see staff mobility, to see staff able to move up and see opportunities for them. We're intrigued by Mr. Matuzik's new title. I asked him if he has a sash that goes with that. I've never heard of that before. And especially in our era of growth and change. And we're grateful, as always, for the staff responsiveness to the Planning Commission issues as we take on our work of facilitating the public engagement around these identified planning issues. So, for example, we had presentations from staff last year, which were extremely helpful to PC in terms of the Roslin Sector Plan and the Crystal City Sector Plan. We got to see what the history and the staff interpretation of these areas was prior to getting in all of those site plans. And that really helped give us and the community a shared understanding of what was coming and what we envisioned for those areas. Really happy to see the virtual tours. It's becoming more and more difficult to have actual walking tours. And we'll miss them, but we're getting really busy. And it's dark, or it's, you know, weather doesn't cooperate. And just recently, something small, staff was able to put up our draft motions during the Planning Commission hearings, which you've always had, but we haven't had, and everybody processes that information differently. And that was a big benefit to some of our members. So key issues around which the Planning Commission is especially concerned, and we want to highlight. And these are things that we hear from the broader community, which we feel we represent, and also what we observe in our own review of the plans and policies when we look at long-range plannings, OCO amendments, and so on. The first one, Commissioner Lan Tommy is going to go into a little bit more detail, and Mr. Duffy did give you a highlight on this. Updating our old sector plans, as well as the GLUP and the zoning ordinance, as much as possible to reflect our current development vision and goals. And this is related to the issue that you might have heard if you watched the PC last Monday regarding desire development density sort of being precluded by current planning documents and policies. The second is our desire to continue to support the design and place-making opportunities for our civic infrastructure, essentially ensuring that we don't look back in 25 years at bridges or other public facilities and think, boy, we wish we'd spent more time on our design resources. And the last one is, again, support for biophilia and promoting it as a new way to consider development, providing urban natural areas, but also other ways of connecting people with nature as our population becomes more densified. And we know that people get benefits from being close to nature, but we're planning on a lot of our population living in our urban cores without backyards and immediate access to big parks. There's lots of ways we can do this. And some of this is in building design, and some of it is in providing these open spaces. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lan Tommy to expand on the first point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Geren. First of all, I do want to join myself to the comments that Commissioner Geren has made about staff. We have a very, very solid working relationship with staff. They're highly competent. They know what they're doing. The advice they give us, the work they do with us has been, in my experience, has been absolutely first-rate. So I want to give them that shout-out right here. But also, as noted by Commissioner Geren, a theme that has emerged from the many site plans that have been reviewed by the Planning Commission is the growing disparity between the newest policy elements of the Comprehensive Plan and the existing GLUP designations, the zoning ordinance, and the site plan process. Specifically, our goals for affordable housing, transportation, and environmental sustainability are often frustrated by the GLUP and zoning. And this includes the sector plans and phase development site plans. I have a couple of short examples. The Ballston Sector Plan is now older than a number of our Planning Commissioners, and I think two of the County Board members. It is so old that not only is Ballston mostly built out, but the buildings constructed under it are now ripe for redevelopment. All of us see the deficiencies in the sector plan. But unless it's changed, those flaws and limitations will be locked in for another couple generations as Ballston 2.0 is built under its rules. Another example will be before you this weekend. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of seven townhouses within walking distance of the Courthouse Metro and this building on Beach Street. This is a site that good planning principles cry out for more density, and everyone involved desired more units on this site. Yet, the governing GLUP designation and the 40-year-old PDSP precluded anything more. It's simply not economic or practical for smaller sites, such as this one, to go through the uncertainty of the GLUP change process. Remember, 40 years old, that's when the Courthouse Metro may not even have been open at that point. We have numerous sites like this throughout the metro corridors that are governed by grossly out-of-date sector plans, PDSPs, and site plan procedures. Our stated policies favoring walkable, mixed uses in these areas simply cannot be fully realized due to these outdated plans. We cannot realize our goals for affordable housing, Vision Zero, economic equity, environmental sustainability, stormwater management, and greenhouse gas reduction without allowing the density necessary to support them. We're also in competition with Tysons, Reston Town Center, and a resurgence in DC. We need to bring these foundational plans into the 21st century. We're going to need to think a different approach on this because, you know, if we're doing them one by one, we're talking at least 10 years before, if we do that one-plan-by-one-plan, one-process-by-one-process approach. Putting it off two years and then adding on to that the time to do it, we're talking 10 years out. We're talking half a century, possibly, for some of these plans. We need to do something. We have to think this through differently in how to approach it.
Wow. That's great. I think we, no, I think we have, so that's not exactly on the agenda, but this is, but I'd like to have us discuss a little bit. I would also say, if you all don't mind, so for work sessions, I like to be a little informal. I thought I'd call you Elizabeth and Jim, and you'd call me Libby. Is that okay? All right. Okay, good. All right. We'll do that. So let me see if any of my colleagues first want to kind of chime in. I do think this issue of these aged plans is probably a really good one. It's not quite the sector plan, but maybe we could talk about it a little bit and then get into maybe the more specifics. But I think that discussion's not a bad one to have if anyone would like to chime in or has any thoughts.
Yeah. As the captioned board member, who is younger than the Ballston Sector Plan.
Yeah.
No, this is really an excellent question. I think that, this is more of a thought, just to kind of continue the conversation, is that it seems to me that the challenges with each of our sector plans with respect to their ability to offer enough density to truly meet the needs, housing-wise, but also, as you so well put, Jim, all of the related benefits. But the challenges are almost, it seems to me, idiosyncratic, sector plan by sector plan. In Ballston, the problem is sheerly the age, right? And simply trying to find a place in the upcoming work plan in the next year or two to prioritize something of that scale. There are others throughout the county that are more recent, but perhaps reflect at the time consensus that we've hopefully worked our way past, right? And so, that's sort of an interesting but separate question. And so that's sort of an interesting but separate question, which is not simply how old is something and does it, by dint of its age, need a fresh look, but rather, do we want to challenge a then-community consensus, arguably, that no longer holds? I don't know that there is a single solution for all of that, but I do think I see now why you guys arrived at the ones that you've offered, which is to say, isn't there some way we can take this on short of a full two-year sector planning exercise? I'm certainly interested in what it looks like. I think we'd probably just have to barrel forward and do one, right? And sketch out what that could look like with somewhere like Ballston or East Falls Church. But it's really an intriguing idea and I think the way you've described it captures the importance of at least beginning to wrestle with the question.
Yep. Thank you, Katie. Christian?
Thank you, Libby.
I don't know. Just feels so formal.
Appreciate it.
Saturday, we're going to be on formality.
So I do find this an interesting conversation and I'm wondering if we're being a little bit too circumspect in how we're talking about it and is, is the issue that our plans have become almost too prescriptive in a way that, you know, doesn't allow us to actually apply dynamically changing concepts in a dynamically changing community? So when we talk about rethinking these things, in effect, aren't we suggesting that perhaps we need to orient our community towards not so specifically planning areas with height maps and specific levels of density and becoming a little bit more conceptual and in effect, retraining everyone in how we participate in planning processes if we are to allow contemporary thinking to actually be meaningful in a planning process? So am I thinking about it the right way? Is that where you're heading?
For me, yes. I'm wondering whether we are, in fact, too prescriptive in a lot of ways. And that's not just the sector plans, but the zoning ordinance itself. Are there ways we can loosen things up, be more flexible? And another example, we have all sorts of garages in this county right now. Well, we know right now that they're underutilized in the, in the RB corridor. What else could be done with those? Could we, let's say, have them become fulfillment centers or transfer points for goods going from the UPS truck to little drone delivery things? Our zoning ordinance doesn't even contemplate something like that, yet the space is there. Maybe we could use it. Things are evolving so fast that there are uses that we barely even have thought of, yet how do we deal with them without going through this huge, long, years-long process to get them addressed? That's one thing, is there some way we could make our zoning ordinance allow more things by right, be more flexible? And this is a thought exercise, of course, because, yes, and you're right, the practicalities of things and that when you get down to the block by block, yeah, we're going to run into trouble. But that doesn't mean we can't or shouldn't address it and try to tackle it.
I just want to say, I think this reflects some of the conversations we've heard at the PC as a whole, but I think Mr. Duffy has suggested that staff is thinking about this also.
Yeah, again, as I said earlier, this is one of the most important things I think we should start thinking about and starting to pursue as we enter this next decade. Our sector plans or the plans for our metro station areas or our metro corridors have to have foundational elements so that there's some strength and some guidance, not just a vision, but some recommendations that will ensure that we have the capacity to implement those plans. But many of our plans today don't have various metrics or opportunities to review the progress of those plans and be able to open certain elements up and make adjustments. Economic, other forms of change, it is just a different world in many ways for planning today, not just here in Arlington, but across the region and the nation. And so this would be an opportunity, I think, for Arlington because we're so well-recognized across the country for our pioneering work with smart growth and metro station planning. Rethink, what should that plan be for the future? Is it for each station area? Is it for elements? Is it for the corridor? We're in the middle of an important planning effort for Lee Highway, which I hope will embrace some of the things that we talked about with our factors today in the presentation. So, but again, this takes some work and this takes some commitment of staff time. We're fortunate that we've got two professional planners who serve as chair and vice chair of the planning commission as well as other citizen planners. But to do this right, it would take a significant effort and again, we'll look for direction from the board.
So I'd love a reaction from our zoning administrator. If we do things by right and not too set down, does this leave you kind of at sea? I mean, I don't, I don't know. And we'll let the lawyers weigh in later. Mr. Mackay's like, don't worry, maybe not now, but, because there's a lot, I mean, this isn't as simple as it sounds, but I think it's absolutely crucial to address. So any thoughts that you've got?
I, I understand, sorry, I'm getting over cold.
Oh, we all are.
I understand the points. I think whatever we decide, I will make sure it gets followed. Certainly, I think there's a balance that has to be met and so everybody wants certainty and they want to know what's going to be next to them. And so that's the difficulty in also trying to allow maximum flexibility is the not knowing. And so it's very hard to say everything's okay because you have a very specific context in mind about where you think it's okay. But if it's applied broadly, there's a lot of unknowns. And so when those come out, then we have these conversations again about how could this be and how could this be allowed by right and why isn't there a process and I should be able to have input in this and what works here may not work there. So it's just, it just makes the conversation more complicated. But I don't know that there's barriers, but there will have to be a process, right, to derive it where we think these things are appropriate.
Yeah, you might get even more popular. Have our planning commissioners looked, is anywhere else doing this? I mean, you're, you know, is there anywhere else that's kind of tackled this and starting to kind of change how they handle?
Let me just make a start at this if I could. There are some better practices or best practices that we can point to. And it's always good to not reinvent the wheel, but I think we have an opportunity in Arlington to examine those, talk to some practitioners who are tackling this, but also come up with the right model for Arlington. And so that would be, that would be part of the first step, I think. And this is an area where staff, working with our planning commission, which has such a large role under Virginia statutes in terms of comprehensive planning and implementation, that it would be one of those great opportunities for a level of collaboration. So, so again, we'll look.
Matt?
So really appreciate you bringing this to me. I think at a tactile level, you know, I want to get more familiar to have at the ready the different plans. And that's a conversation that, you know, maybe it's another shared brown bag lunch that we talk with both of you at some point. And I'd also seek that out from staff because I don't think, I've looked in part, but I don't think I have at a tactile level to get to Katie's point. I don't have it at a tactile level, just what I'd like. But in the context of this, just also want to emphasize how, not being a planner, but respecting planning a lot, when you said housing, that changed my perspective because for me, we have discovered as a nation over the last five years that housing is a crisis. And so, you know, it's not a shock to you, but that will be a piece of what drives this. I really appreciate that you brought this point and I think Ballston is, you know, that's a concrete tangible thing in addition to housing. And so I'll seek out brown bag conversations and probably ask for that with staff because that will make it come more alive for me and I'll be a better partner in that regard.
Thank you. I'll go back down again. Katie?
I was going to make the joke that Ballston's actually a beige brick thing instead of a concrete thing. No, I actually had a question related to this issue that one of the residents of the 2220 area had brought up to me recently and been sort of mulling on it for a while, which was, from this individual's perspective anyway, this sort of perceived incompatibility with a sector plan happening and a bike element, the bike element that had been updated, this sort of decision to not pursue a protected bike lane within a sector plan when they felt that the bike element might, might have carried the day or ought to have carried the day since it had been adopted more recently. I think probably the specifics of that site plan could be argued and that's why I don't get too into the weeds to ask it. But I do wonder, part of the way in which perhaps we keep our sector plans a little fresher than their multi-decade age might otherwise indicate, is by this sort of iterative, what I think of as this like kind of relationship between our comp plan elements and our sector plans, which are, of course, themselves part of the comp plan. But I'm interested sort of to our staff, how you approach that issue, right? When we have, for example, a bike element, a newly adopted bike element in the master transportation plan that says that we are going to pursue more aggressively protected bike lanes in our densest areas, even if the sector plans may not have envisioned them to quite such a similar extent. What is the thinking about how we approach that? What carries the day, so to speak, beyond the sort of general, you know, we look at everything together?
Well, when we update an element of the comp plan, such as the master transportation plan, we're always going to go back and look at some of the sector plan recommendations. However, again, in five or 10-year period, there are, there's new technology or there are new engineering practices or new, that really rise to a point where we just couldn't have conceived of some of those things when we were working on a plan. So, board member, that's really the essential part of this. How can we keep these sector plans current and have them mesh closely with the comprehensive plan so there's greater clarity and certainty for everyone involved? And it's not, it's not an easy thing to do. It would require reinventing possibly some of the things that we do, have done in the past.
But I wonder, I mean, would we ever say, for example, that we have a rule of thumb? The more contemporary plan is the one that carries the day?
The sector plan certainly goes into greater detail. I think the master transportation plan, for example, reflects some of the recommendations. As you know, we come to the board with revisions, proposed revisions to the MTP and other plan elements based on studies we do with the general land use plan and other updates. You know, we are in the process, we will talk about later today, I hope, the Clarendon plan implementation, which is a good example of where there could be elements of the MTP as well as the GLUP and the sector plan itself that might require some revision to achieve the community facility goals that the sector plan also includes. So all these things are in a roving and from both policy planning to the more detailed visions that the sector plans bring.
Thank you. I will get us to the Clarendon sector plan, but maybe not quite yet. Christian, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, it just seems to me that I think this is incredibly important for us, given our status as a dynamically changing community, but also one that has experienced a lot of success based on planning. This may be among the most consequential and difficult things that we take on, so I understand the reticence to do so immediately. But I also want to put in a plug for maybe we think about it differently than just simply figuring out when this can fit within the planning work plan and that maybe we become a little bit entrepreneurial, much in the way the manager did in finding some support for exploring how we might implement restorative justice programs, that we maybe think about this as part of your innovation initiatives and efforts to really, to figure out if there's some, some help out there to maybe do a lot of this thought work for us while you're implementing a very important plan, work program, excuse me. And Ms. Vohm, you said it very well. Everybody, everybody wants certainty until they desire to do something that's not allowed and they want flexibility. So we're trying to marry all of that stuff and, and while we would love to be able to point to something as dispositive as why we're pursuing a particular policy direction, that's just inconceivable, given how specific all of our plans tend to be and the nature at which they all come online. So this is, this is some great, good public policy work and I think we probably need some, need some help to move it forward to give it the importance that it requires.
Thank you. The word crowdsourcing keeps popping into my head. I'm not sure, but this is, this is major, thank you so much for bringing this up and appreciate this and we're certainly not going to solve it now, but I think, Christian, you really stated how important it is. And somewhat, a little bit on the same issue and then we will get to the, what's here on the agenda. So I noticed last year we did, you said we were going to do 10 sector plans and we did nine. This year, we say we're going to do 15. Have we done any yet? Was that considered a major plan that we did in January?
Would you ask Mr. Schreiber to join us?
Sure. Hey, Aaron. So where I'm headed with this is the number of sector plans, the number of months in the year, how many months we've already gotten through workload is what I'm really kind of focusing on just a little bit for planning commission and us. I mean, how much are we going to have to be processing per month here coming up? Just wondering what you're seeing.
Thank you for having me and I'm Aaron Schreiber with the Planning Division. What you see in table number two is we're trying to track those applications for you to show you where they are in the life cycle. So it was correct in that last year, we anticipated 10 site plans coming forward to the board. Only nine then did, but I think that if you look at how, how many applications we viewed and how many were viewed, it was about twice as many. So we're trying to show you the difference from our work capacity standpoint, how many are reviewing at any one time versus how many come to the board. What we're showing you in this table two, we highlighted those in yellow for the ones that we anticipate that would be coming to the planning commission and to the county board in calendar year 20. And I know we're sometimes mixing between calendar year and fiscal year, but wanted to just give you that idea of the volume that's there. And then we focused in on going forward, the 15 applications, we are taking those out of what's currently in our final queue. All of those should get approved this fiscal year. So when we say 15, we're really picking up in the preliminary category. And then we're running all the way through the preliminary and then we picked up a few anticipated projects as well. That's our rough estimate, but that could change at any moment with more projects coming.
So we've got the capacity to, I mean, sometime we're going to run out of time to do them, but I guess we just slow things down. I, you know, I just want to sort of be aware of what we're trying to do. It just picks up every year and obviously we add people, but we don't add months in the year.
I don't think it's necessarily that we have to slow down. I think that as Mr. Duffy mentioned, there have been some staffing changes that have come along recently. We're actively recruiting for a new site plan review coordinator position, which should provide additional capacity to one of our now-six principal planners who review site plan projects. I think we've also implemented some significant changes with the planning commission regarding the site plan review committee that has allowed us to be more efficient and to move projects through the process, not necessarily quicker, but with more, with a more of an anticipated schedule to bring them along. So it's allowed us to spread our capacity amongst those six principal planners to handle two or three applications at any one time. That is a significant volume, but it is something that appears to be doable for the foreseeable future.
Great.
Board members, last year, if you recall, you, you gave us a new principal planner as part of the current planning team and that's made a big difference. We've also been looking to train and engage other principal associate planners within and outside of the section. For example, we've had some of our associate planners who historically have worked on use permits, actually to work with their and more senior member of the staff on, on site plan activity. Most recently, one of our urban design staff, Brett Wallace, has been working on the Key Bridge Marriott site from the urban design team. So again, one of our commitments to ensure our staff remains versatile and giving the, having the opportunity to develop across sectional lines has been important and made a difference. I think the last thing that's made a difference is working with the site planner review committee and we have a finite number of meetings every year to schedule with the site planner review committee to make sure that we get those scheduled early and, and work within, work with agendas for each of those meetings to, to ensure we're not only efficient, but also comprehensive in this important review process. So that partnership again with the planning commission, SPRC, has made a difference.
Great. Elizabeth, Jim, any comments you want? I know you're doing a little reorganization just to kind of move things, you know, to be able to handle more as well. I don't know if you wanted to comment on that or not.
Sure. I think I spoke with some of you board members and certainly some staff, Mr. Duffy and some other senior staff about the proposed change that we made this year where we're not insisting every- everybody go to every meeting. And certainly you can go as a planning commissioner to every meeting if you'd like to go, and there are some that do want to go. But given that our more recent appointees are a different demographic, they're younger with small children, or full-time jobs, or both, we're hoping that that allows a little bit of an escape valve, a little bit of a, you know, relief from feeling overwhelmed by the meetings. And we still feel we're getting sufficient attendance at our SPRCs and LRPCs and ZOCOs. You heard, we had more than 50 meetings last year, that it's sufficient with our public engagement to have a full conversation about these issues. And of course, staff is always there, so we're not missing anything big, and we're still, you know, we're trying to make changes to accommodate these ambitious schedules as well.
All right. Everybody's game to do this. This is great. Matt, did you have something?
Just quick, I noticed on Columbia Pike that it's, there's nobody designated on that slide four, and I just, others may know, but I just didn't know how that's being handled.
No retreating from staffing for the Pike revitalization. The only reason it's vacant is that Jen Smith is hiring some staff to fill vacancies, and we have one of these new senior supervisory positions that she'll be recruiting. We wanted to make sure we had our work program well thought out and supported by the board before we made some of those decisions, so we'll fill that gap very shortly.
So, the supervisory first and then the Pike position after that?
We're, yes. And so, we're working through that, but again, no retreat from the Pike in terms of staffing.
Sure. Thank you.
Great. So, we have down on our agenda County Board Discussion, Arlington County Zoning Ordinance Amendments, and Clarendon Sector Plan Implementation. Was there a particular slide that, I think it's 11 perhaps? I don't know if you had a particular area that you want to discuss, and then I'd like to just see what board members.
I wonder if I can pick up where the manager left off, and slide 45 is important, not only because it summarizes the number of zoning ordinance amendment studies and amendments that fall into these three buckets that the manager described in terms of the long-term, short-term, and condensed, and we can go through those slides again. But last year, Arlova and I met, began thinking about this demand and for processing and addressing zoning ordinance amendments, not just from a later policy standpoint, but in terms of a number of areas that deal with omissions, administrative changes, and so forth. If County Board Member Gutshaw was here.
He would be talking about the parking lot. Well, and I'll let, Arlova described this in more detail, but we've been working with the zoning staff on developing a new consolidated work program for zoning ordinance amendments that not only covers what we've recommended in this year's work program, but well beyond that. So, Arlova, I don't know if you want to address that a little bit, describe the work we're doing.
Sure. Up until this point, both planning and zoning had been creating and maintaining separately lists of things that we found that needed to change. So, we get people complain, I think this is wrong, or there's a typo here, and we had a list. And then totally independently, planning had a separate list, and sometimes.
Was there any overlap?
Yes.
Oh, good.
But because we were doing them in isolation, it was duplicative and then a waste of time and effort. So, we started working together, and we now have one. We found the areas of overlap. Some of the things on our list had already been addressed, or we learned through planning, we're going to be part of other things in their work program. So, we're being more intentional about how we can get some things done. And then some things that we hear about from, you know, the practitioners, the contractors, were frankly never going to rise to the top of the larger policy issues that we're, we're trying to figure out in these meetings. And so, can we, can zoning take on the simple things that are not policy changes, like simple errors, omissions, cross-references that are wrong, language that could be clarified? Can we handle some of those and get them off of this work plan and just done on a regular basis so that we can make the most of it? So, we have about 50. We came up with a system using the condensed, most of ours were condensed or maybe short-term, that zoning would take the lead on, and we batched them based on things that made sense about, you know, starting small with typos and incorrect graphics and moving to, these are things that zoning in its operation has done for decades, but the text doesn't match our practice. So, those on paper might appear to be policy changes, but in practice may not be. But they were going to, they're going to require a little more public conversation. And so, that's how we, and so, we work together on, is this a policy change? Whose bucket should it go in? And we kind of have a plan for the first three or four batches, and we'll see how it goes.
I think that's great.
We're going to be bringing this report forward to the manager this spring, and I think you'll be very impressed with it. This is pretty significant because this enables both of our staff to work together, but expands the capacity of our staff within the department to tackle these zoning amendments. Historically, some that planning would prayer reports and appear before you or the ZOCO Committee, this gives us more bandwidth, again, to do some of this. So, again, what I, when you see this list, it contributes to what I'm going to call building the zoning ordinance for the 21st century and clearing up some of these amendments and ensuring that, again, some of these upgrades will make our ordinance certainly improved.
Thank you. That's great. Sounds like common sense, which is great. Katie, did you have something?
Actually, I believe you specifically said that planning and zoning were working together to form a 21st century zoning ordinance and practice maintenance and amendments, which was the most poetic thing I've, I've ever heard. That really resonated with me. So, I'm very encouraged by what you're describing because I do think it's something that's sort of been long needed, right? And you all are really the eyes and ears in your team about these little things that are kind of out of whack and need to be trued up with actual practice and reality. I think that questions that I have though, and I suspect that the items that we see at the board level are very much one hair beyond purely technical. There's a small amount of policy judgment, right? And that's where, I'm trying to channel our colleague Eric, because I know he'd be pushing this point, but it's really of interest to me too. And I'm going to use an example, although I was excited to hear that you think you might have a solution to that example, so I look forward to hearing that. But the, but the sign ordinance, the temporary signs for farmers' markets, I think is a great example of this. So, I want us to talk about that substantively, but I'm also going to just try to use it illustratively because it's not actually purely technical to allow open-air markets. It does require a little bit of policy judgment, but I would argue it requires only the littlest bit of policy judgment. And so, my question is, like, what are our, is there a category that we can get to? And I know this is something that Eric and I too have been pushing for, interested in. Those things that, that we really do, you know, believe this community can work through expeditiously, that don't require four meetings of ZOCO and extensive community engagement with every neighborhood. But we don't want to just have languish. So, the, the items that fall kind of in that gray area or just a hair beyond technical, is there, is there a thought in this framework for, for them?
The zoning administrator and I've had a discussion about this, and one of our outstanding farmers market managers is here in the audience today, and Rob and I have talked about this. You know, ever since the read decision by the Supreme Court, we've been working with the county attorney's office, be very careful with some of these sign amendments. But Arlova and I have talked, and I don't know, Arlova, do you want to just touch on this briefly? We may have a potential.
I, I think if we use our terminology, it probably could be a condensed process.
Okay.
I think the difficulty is what always seems like a small thing can sometimes turn into a larger thing. So, we start out saying, this is a no-brainer. It's, it's very straightforward, it's very simple, and all we have to do is X. And then they scope creeps once you start talking about things. It's like, well, can you add that? And this is almost the same, and can't you just include that? Because the process takes months, you want to try to maximize it, so you want to maybe group it with something else and not take things piecemeal one at a time. So, I mean, I think it, I know the issue that you're talking about, and it seems like pretty straightforward, but we haven't, we've talked about it at a higher level, we haven't talked about actually putting it in and where it would fall in terms of the next year.
So, we wanted to wait to have some of this discussion with the board and the zoning administrator and staff, we can come forward with our thoughts and further thoughts on that following this meeting.
Okay. Well, I definitely don't want to lose the thread on that. I'm very interested in the farmers' market piece in particular. But I'm also not sure I'm leaving this conversation entirely satisfied that we have a way of thinking about these, these pieces. I'm certainly enlightened and reminded that these one-offs are not always one-offs, no-brainers are rarely that. But I know, you know, Eric has articulated an, an ideal sort of practice that we might be in, where we know that there probably just going to be a few, whether they are condensed or low overhead, is a term we've used before, zoning ordinance amendments that we're entertaining at any given time. And I worry sometimes that because we batch these seeming one-offs with others, they sort of don't get done, right? We have big hairy questions about the future of our sign ordinance, for example, and I would hate for, for us to lose small opportunities. And again, I'm, it sounds like we might have a path forward on that one, so I'm very excited about that. But I use, I keep using that as an illustration of a general challenge.
Well, I think when we, when zoning and planning bring this report forward to the manager, I think you're going to see outside of the policy, there are nine areas that where a number of these amendments that could be processed through this more, I'll call it expedited, process over time could occur. And it's very comprehensive, but again, and it could over time continue to be updated. So, I'd ask the board for the opportunity to bring this forward, discuss it with the manager, and then find the, the right approach to have for the discussion with the board about it.
Okay. Christian?
Sure. I'll just take another discrete issue. I'm interested in continuing the conversation on the sign piece, but also outdoor cafes in RC districts, which is one I've been particularly interested in, and I'm happy to see that it's on the condensed process timeline, but note that, you know, when it's scheduled for study would mean likely no, no changes if there are changes to be made until the next outdoor cafe season. So, essentially, another, another year for any businesses that might be impacted by it. So, the question comes not, can you move this up? I'm not going, I realize that has implications throughout the work plan. That's not where I'm going. The question becomes, is it a practice elsewhere that we would ever, that, that people would ever pursue or implement provisional ability to do something while a locality is studying it?
And then I'll let our zoning administrator respond for, in terms of Virginia legislation.
Not that I'm aware of. I, I don't know of any such practice.
Is it not possible, not advisable, never conceptualized? What's the?
I think our attorney might want to comment, maybe more than our zoning administrator does, I don't know.
Sure. Whomever.
Arlova, if you've got something you want to add, go ahead.
I'd say it's not, not legal or advised.
Yeah. I think that'd be a vesting problem. Steve will tell.
You got to, there, Steve, there are millions of people trying to listen.
It's perfectly permissible that you should understand that it doesn't, it doesn't fall into some category that it's different from any other zoning ordinance provision.
I'm sorry. Steve, please, sit.
Sure. Thank you. Sit and stay.
Yeah. Yeah. Just for a minute.
I was going to say, there's nothing unusual about it. It is simply a zoning ordinance amendment that you are going to put on the books and you're going to suffer the consequences of it, and then you may repeal it at some later date. Anybody who took advantage of it would be vested, and, and those would be perhaps the outliers. So, I mean, the consequential question is the one you asked, what is the consequence of that? You know, if it's a really bold initiative, you may decide that it's really just an awful idea, and yet someone has taken advantage of it. But otherwise, there's no sort of magic category where these are like, you know, temporary or, you know, I fear to say, a pilot or a temporary zoning ordinance provision. You simply amend the zoning ordinance, you allow it, and whatever comes, comes, and then you can repeal it if you don't like it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything more on this, or should we move to Clarendon? Yeah. Yeah, Katie, go ahead.
Tell me when you, in your agenda, it makes sense to talk about some of the items that are being deferred to a later year in this. I had a couple of questions about that. I'm happy to talk after Clarendon, and I don't know if it makes sense to do it before.
Well, on the agenda, it's probably sort of after that. Maybe we do Clarendon and then we get to that. We might not have much for Clarendon, but that's kind of the major point, actually, of the whole, that's kind of the wrap-up, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, in a way. Okay. Are we ready to move to Clarendon? All right.
So, the Clarendon Sector Plan was adopted in 2016 and 2006. Jen Smith has been, really was very active in the project manager with, with the Clarendon Sector Plan, and she might want to join us for, for this discussion. We're anticipating at least three new major site plan applications in Clarendon, and this graphic that I'll put on the screen illustrates, so you can see Washington Boulevard crossing the map diagonally, Wilson Boulevard running diagonally, 10th Street to the bottom. And so, the four areas that appear in red are site plans that the County Board has previously approved, including the Shushan Project appears as number three, the VFW, number one, and two, the residential project at Washington and Kirkwood. But if you look in the right-hand corner, you'll see four, which is the Joyce Motors application, which we currently have, and five and six, applications for the Silver Diner and the Wells Fargo sites. We anticipate those will be coming in this year. So, those two blocks, in many ways, that make up part of the Western Gateway of Clarendon, are also blocks that have recommend opportunities for, how should we cite, a new fire station, if that's possible, a new park, childcare facilities, and other road improvements in this area. So, Jen, I don't know if you want to pick up where I sort of left off, but again, this is an opportunity, we believe, to work with the Planning Commission, with the LRPC, provide a good overview of what the plan's recommendations are and make some decisions for moving forward before we begin reviewing these applications in earnest.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. This just really gives us an opportunity to really revisit the sector plan recommendations and see how we can realize primarily the public facilities that were less certain and specific about how they would remain in the Clarendon area, while we're also contemplating private development to round out the western edge of Clarendon. We have some highly specific sector plan recommendations that were also codified in the zoning, so it will be important for us to go back and look at updates to the sector plan, which will have a direct impact on the zoning as well, related to the topic that you were talking about earlier as part of this work session.
There are a number of use and height-related recommendations from the sector plan. As you know, it's a form-based plan, was integrated into the actual Clarendon zoning ordinance. And again, the community facility part of this focus in those two blocks that Jen's described. So, we think it's extremely important that we work with the community and with the Planning Commission to revisit the plan, understand what those commitments and recommendations are. We've also recently corresponded with the three major proprietors, development interests, that our intention is to proceed with this review, and coordinated review of these plans will be essential moving forward.
Okay. And it's a fire station. Go ahead.
I just want to add one thing. When the plan was adopted in 2006, the working assumption then was that Fire Station 4 would be relocated because of some other changes in Fire Station locations. It has proven simply just not to be true. As a matter of fact, we have greater demand there. And the other thing I wanted to point out is we've had one or two meetings with George Mason, the Center for Digital Innovation, and they are trying to figure out where the cans department store is, which, it's nine.
Nine.
Yeah. They, when we said that we were going to do this look, they said, oh, please, please get, you know, see what you can do about finding a place for people who want to come and visit and stay. and visit and stay in a hotel, there's nothing nearby. And they actually said to us, this could be an opportunity for us to innovate.
A welcome center kind of thing, got it. All right. Cool, thank you. All right. Anything more, colleagues? Thoughts about this? I see nothing, Kristin, no?
I can just note, I mean, I do think it makes sense. I don't, it seems to me that there may be other questions invited by a fresh look in light of these new applications, such as transportation circulation, for example. You know, I don't know that it makes sense to do public facilities to the exclusion of others. However, you know, there certainly seems sound and it seems like a way to ensure that the proposed applications and opportunities proceed in a way that is not only consistent with some of the spirits or big ideas of the sector plan, but actually better reflect our reality, much like we were discussing in our prior conversation. So I am supportive.
Anything else? This seems like a quick one. All right. Shall we move on to priorities? Katie, you ready?
Yes. So that's always the major interest, right, the things that are deferred. A couple of just clarifying questions and a request. The first is regarding the four-mile Run Valley Arts District formation being deferred. So I think as Mr. Duffy noted a couple times, that our team at Economic Development will be continuing with it. I think they've done a really fabulous job and it's actually represented a pretty good inter-division handoff, right? That was from CPHD to over to AED for this follow-up work. But I'm trying to really get my head around pretty specifically what limited support means with regard to the working group, and so I'll give a specific instance of what I'm talking about. So the group is right now considering a sort of variety of models that could apply here, looking at other examples. Nearly all of them have as a next step zoning review of potential arts and entertainment uses. And that makes sense, right? If we're going to create a maker space, we need to ensure that that's compatible with the zoning there. So I guess my rather pointed question is just, when you all say limited support, is there a potential to still do that kind of analysis? I think what I worry about is there's a perception, rightly or wrongly, whether it's fair, that this work really stalled out, right, after the four-mile run plan was completed. And I, what I really want to avoid is the Arts and Industry Group concluding its work and then it kind of not going anywhere until we have the planning staff capacity to do that zoning analysis.
So I think we will intend to continue with the Arts District and see how we can support that piece of it and give them some preliminary feedback in terms of compliance, you know, are uses allowed in the zoning or not, some limited feedback. I think it's really when you get into, now what do we do with that and how do we make changes into the zoning ordinance that we would need to think about when the timeline, when we can accommodate and fit that work into our work plan.
Okay. You know, it's hard to say that that's going to be a problem until we know what the Arts and Industry Group is going to propose. If they're going to do a pretty light touch that's heavy on the marketing and so forth and your feedback is plenty, right, just knowing whether these uses are compatible or not. If they're hoping to do something greater, I think it could potentially be sort of deleterious to our overall efforts if we were to say that we can't do anything to effectuate those recommendations for at least another six months, maybe longer. So I don't suppose I have any feedback or thoughts or even requests to shift around resources at this time, but it is something that I'm, maybe we just flag, is something I hope we can stay in touch about and, you know, with the economic development colleagues, if it looks like we're cruising towards a bigger, more ambitious plan that would require more CPHD time, I suppose I don't have anything more pointed to say than let's just stay in conversation, right, and see if we can avoid it, seeming like that work grinds to a halt again. My other question, or actually request, with the childcare initiative, bumping that off to fiscal '22 or future, I think that makes sense. You know, we got a tremendous amount of work done and staff are spectacular and it's such a loss for our community that Kim Vaca has moved on, but was really a wonderful teammate and lead, I think, from CPHD on that. So it makes sense to me that the work has moved forward. I am however cognizant that this is the second year, we've looked to kind of push it off a year. And so my request would be, if we're, find ourselves back here in next February and the proposal is going to be to defer it to fiscal 2022 or fiscal 2023 further, I would really love to be able to see some data about the impacts that the first round of zoning ordinance and childcare ordinance revisions have made. Because if we really have a lot of optimism that we kind of took a whack at some of the biggest barriers that are, is really important part of our economy is growing and thriving, then maybe it actually isn't as urgent that we take on some of those incentives and other pieces. If, after the initial push, it was petering out and we're still back to sort of the same challenges of lack of supply that we've had, I may react differently next year than I would this year to the idea of deferring it. So that's my request for next February.
Board member, we can certainly provide a report, an update on how it's, how we're succeeding with that first phase of work. I think you see some of how we're succeeding every, every board meeting with a number of use permits that are coming forward to expand childcare at the, at the home level. So we will, we will report back to the manager and to the board on that.
That's exciting. I'd like to actually ask for that because I report after all of our consent items and I ask the staff, I'd like to keep a running total of what we're doing. So yeah, Smea's on it. Yeah, no, I think it's absolutely crucial to do and I absolutely agree. Anything else that you wanted to? Okay, great. Kristin, anything?
Just a couple. First, on this slide, the site plan conditions, I just want to make sure that I understand that the process for reconsidering our level of energy efficiency, because lead is mentioned with respect to form-based code, I'm not trying to advance that, more further up where it says standard site plan conditions update, we're not pushing yet the possibility, or are we pushing yet the possibility of going to a higher standard of energy efficiency in our buildings?
Well, we're working closely with the DES staff. In fact, Aaron Schreiber and I met last week with staff to discuss how we'll be moving forward with them on that. In addition, what we do in the interim while those new policies are being brought forward to the county board, and we think we have a way forward to that. So I don't want the board to come away with thinking that we're not focusing on that. But again, this, as you know, we've, over time, have reduced the number of site plan conditions from a large number down to a very manageable number. And on an annual basis, we step back and review those with the departments and sometimes make changes. I don't think we'll need to do that comprehensive review this year, but if there are amendments, certainly we bring those to the county manager and the county board will start to see those as part of site plan. So we're not divorcing ourselves from ongoing amendments, but just not this more comprehensive overview in the coming fiscal year.
Great, okay. And then I just want to associate myself with the Clarendon. You using the word quick with respect to that, my impression is that that's a pretty flexible process to the Clarendon site plan.
It's going to be a very compressed process and there'll be more, we'll provide the board with more details about that in terms of the engagement process and so on. So we'll do that late winter, early spring.
Got it. I think I have the rest of my questions. One is on permit Arlington Phase Two. One is on the role that CPHD plays with stormwater recovery. And then just a follow-up question on Lee Highway, I'll share those in writing if that's okay and then follow up later. And then just leave with one final thought, which is mindful that planning, this is something that occurred a little bit later last year and there was a desire to move this up and I appreciate you doing that, Libby. And I know we're in the process on housing Arlington, I just, keeping in orbit are, you know, we have to grow our economy as a whole, but also housing Arlington, finding that leader and then all the energy that we can put into housing Arlington is kind of, I just feel like that's worth mentioning because, you know, what gets measured gets done and we're in a two-hour work session, we just want to make sure from my perspective that housing continues to be a priority. And I know it is, I just feel like our work session, I want to keep that orbit of, I could do a half hour out of this, these two hours just on housing because I feel like that could have some use.
As I hope the work program indicated, it's our top priority, both our work here in Arlington, our work with our regional partners, and our work with the city of Alexandria as we continue to meet with them. We put together an outstanding team of joint planning and housing staff who make that their only priority, whether it's the missing middle, dealing with the two-family zoning amendments, dealing with housing conservation district recommendations that are coming forward this year. It is our top priority and one of the most important priorities certainly for our county.
Yeah, it sure is, just about everywhere. Small business support, could you describe, give me some examples? I realize I'm not quite sure what that's going to look like.
Board chair, I'm going to pull a slide up. It's one of the later exhibits that I included. And as you know, last year, we certainly did some great work and in some ways, Phase One of the childcare initiative really supports small businesses, daycare homes. We did some major revisions, working with Aaron and his staff on revising the renewal cycles for use permits. And we're very actively involved in permit Arlington, launching and supporting that. But we have four areas that we're going to be committed to this year, and that's the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code, those ground floor uses. And we're working with AED very closely, based on the study that was done for the Pike. AED is going to advance some preliminary recommendations that we'll begin to work with and bring forward as code amendments. The outdoor cafes, again, board member Dorsey, I heard you, if there's a way to move this forward to get to the next cycle, we will, we will work hard to do that. Something that we have not done and we've not talked a lot about, but stepping back and reviewing many of our special exception use permit uses and by right uses in the zoning ordinance that have relationship to small businesses is something we're going to review and bring some recommendations forward to the county manager and to the board, how we might be able to modify some of those. Some might be outdated and some might be able to handle more administratively or through a different approach to use permits. The city of Alexandria does it very differently. They have a large spectrum of administrative-related special use permit approvals, but it's a very different approach. And again, on an annual basis, we see about 130 to 150 administrative permit applications that come to the zoning administrator for review and approval. Those come through our office, our urban design staff reviews them, make recommendation, I sign off with a recommendation, zoning administrator. Many of them involve changing a door, modifying vents, slightly changing windows, I could go on, changing different species of plants, still within the concept. Those really shouldn't require that level of staff review. And Chris Kreider and his team are going to be working with the zoning administrator and myself to revise that process, make it streamlined. And again, this ties in with permit Arlington to a degree as well. So while there'll be no formal zoning amendments, I believe, in talking with the zoning administrator, this will be some internal processes that could have pretty significant implications for many businesses that file applications in Arlington.
That's very, that's very helpful. More common sense, that makes just a whole lot of sense to not do all of this about moving a door hinge or something. Thank you. Anything more, colleagues? Question, your lights on?
Thank you. So I'm sorry for the vagueness of this question, but I do mean it sincerely. You know, one of the dissatisfying elements of this conversation for me every year, it's, you know, you're giving us your honest assessment of your capacity and naturally, we would love for you to be able to add more and do it faster. But never do we explore whether there's anything that we could do to actually facilitate this work getting done more quickly. So I'm going to throw that out there for you to consider. You do not have to answer it now if it's uncomfortable or requires further thought, but I think if there is a way that we can be helpful, that it should be articulated because I think we all desire to get this stuff done and not to just give you an impossible task to try and achieve every year. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the go-to-the-order? Planning Commission, yes, Jim?
Oh, yes. We were recognizing planning commissioners. Nia, it's very nice to see you. Nia Bagley, thank you.
Anything else? Marks, Mia, colleagues? All right. So this has been a great discussion. Do staff feel like you have enough feedback? The one thing that I picked up that I hadn't expected was this discussion prompted by the Planning Commission, that we've got these older plans and they may really be getting in the way, the same way all of these nitpicking things are getting in the way. We've got to figure out a better way to do it. And following up on Christian's statement, I think we do want to be helpful and I was only half joking when I said crowdsourcing. I mean, it really feels like there may be some ways to get some really good minds out there helping us on this, just, you know, throwing out some advice. Pleased to see the stuff on small business. I will say I am increasingly concerned about small businesses here and I feel like just as we have an affordable housing crisis, we have a crisis of the ability of small businesses to survive here. And I think it's the same thing, it's the cost of the real estate. And I'm thinking sometimes more and more, what we do with housing, we maybe need to look at a way of doing that for businesses. I don't know what form that will take, but I do think we need to be thinking about that because things are going and changing really fast. And if we don't, don't do something, we're going to turn around and look and what happened to everybody. So anything else? All right. I think with that, we are done. It's not a two-hour work session, I think it's about an hour and 45 minutes. I do have, so we are concluded. I have one motion though I have to make. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I need now to move that the county board convene a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code Sections 2.2, 3711A1 and 8 for the following purposes. One, personnel matter concerning a contractor employed by the county board, and one personnel matter concerning an appointee of the county board, consultation with the county attorney on a matter requiring the provision of legal advice regarding the county board's authority to amend Section 15.5.8 of the zoning ordinance, and consultation with the county attorney on a matter requiring the provision of legal advice concerning the legal bases for the county's phased development site plans and the properties that are eligible to file applications for them. Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So we are now going into closed session. Thank you all, everybody, have a good evening. Thanks a lot. Thanks for pulling that out, I think I might have forgotten it.